All right. Good evening, everyone. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting laws, General Law Chapter 38, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations in the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Plimpton School Committee is being conducted via remote participation. Now, in-person attendance of members of the public has been permitted, but every effort has been made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order using Zoom either by computer or telephone. This meeting is being recorded for informational purposes only and is not considered to be a public record. And so Jill, I will turn the meeting over to you for the initial reorganization.
Thank you. So I'd like to call the Plimpton School Committee meeting to order. And I'd like to begin with a roll call if you are here. Dan, are you here?
Here.
Jason?
Yeah.
Amy? I can see you.
I'm here.
Thank you. Nicole?
I am here.
And John?
Here.
Okay, since tonight is our reorganization, I'd like to call for a nomination for the Chair of the Plimpton School Committee. Are there any nominations?
I would like to put forth John as a nominee for Chair.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? John, are you willing to accept that nomination?
Yes, I am.
Any discussion? Seeing none, I will again ask for a roll call vote. Dan?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
Hey, thank you, John. I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you. So we have two other, two other positions that we need to get someone slotted in for. First is Vice.
I'll nominate Jason Frazier for the Vice Chair.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Jason, you're good with this?
Absolutely. Thank you.
You will call again. Dan?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Okay. And the final position is Position of Secretary. Since Mr. Anton was, was our secretary, that is an open, open slot. Do we have any nominations for that?
I would like to nominate Amy.
I'll second that.
Amy, you're good with that?
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
All right. Any discussion? Roll call, Dan?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Okay, thank you, everyone. So moving along here, we have regular session minutes for April 26th. Folks have a chance to take a look at them.
Make a motion to approve our April 26th regular meeting.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Danny?
Yes.
Nikki? Jason?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And then I think folks were sent in the mail, the executive session minutes for January 25th, February 22nd, March 22nd, and April 26th.
John, do you have April 26th in front of you right now?
I do not.
Okay, so I make a motion to approve the January 25th, 2021 executive session minutes, the February 22nd, 2021 executive session minutes, the March 22nd, 2021 executive session minutes, and the April 26th, 2021 executive session minutes with a hold on the February, March, and April minutes.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Great, thank you both. Dan? Yes?
Yes.
Nikki?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And John is yes.
And John, just a point of order. I know we're going to be discussing potentially getting back into in-person meetings eventually, and I'd just like to request that maybe we can look at any outstanding executive session minutes that have been held from the year 2000 and prior to see if we can release any of those at this point.
Okay. All right. That sounds good. All right, School Committee correspondence. We did have one item from, that Amy had sent in on behalf of Paze to do a movie night up at the Denit following following soccer game, right? And I thought, I told Amy that I had no problems with that, but just wanted to bring it before the committee and also as a result, we'll, in a little bit, we'll talk about sort of a process to make sure that we can do this efficiently without having to come back before the committee each time and hold that up. But it seems like a great event and a great way to sort of kick off the summer. And for so from a, from a using the Denit fields from that purpose, I certainly don't have any issues. Any, any discussion or comments from anyone else?
I think it's a good idea.
What was the date again? I just found that email up.
What was that?
What was the date?
It's the 18th. No, I'm lying to you. It's the 12th. The 12th, yep. We have the U8 World Cup, and then we have a coaches versus kids game, two of them, and then we'll have the movie night right after. So it kind of like a whole day thing.
Peter, no concerns from your perspective? All right. Done deal.
Awesome. Thank you.
Negotiations. We did come back in our last meeting. We did go to executive session and we approved the teacher's contract. I just thought I would bring that up here as well. It's one-year contract, and it was really good to be able to work with the teachers to get that sorted. And our hope is with things returning to a bit more of normal, that next year we can get back to the three-year contract. But since everything was sort of a little up in the air this spring, we did successfully negotiate a good contract with the teachers. We will be having an executive session at the end of this meeting to look over the negotiated contract for the Plimpton Denit aides. And we'll announce what that, what comes out of that following that meeting. And on to new business. So one of the things I wanted to just, I think most of us, not all of us, were at town meeting, but just to give you an update, we had gone from, in the special town meeting, we had asked to do number of transfers to be able to deal with driveway, to be able to deal with trees, and help purchase a mower for the highway department to be able to better maintain the fields, and a few other things there. Those were all successfully passed. That's the good news. One of the other things that we were trying to do is we had put an article to take 20,000 of unused funds and be able to turn that into a payment for Denit staff, an amount of $500. We had a little bit of an issue at town meeting. The, as the, as the vote was counted, we won, we got passed with a two-vote margin. It became clear at, at the next item that came after the special town meeting that had a significant amount of debate and also a standing count, that the Finance Committee was not counted in that vote. And they had all voted against doing that transfer simply because they believed that we should, if we were going to be offering payments like that, we should be offering it not just to the, to the school, but also to other departments in town. Given that there was an error in the vote count, they couldn't correct that at town meeting. But if we had been able to revote that, it would have lost. It's my recommendation to the School Committee that we that we just don't act on those funds. So the funds will have already been transferred because that was what, what had happened as, as part of town meeting, but that we not issue any payments out of that. I had had some further conversations with the FinCom Chair, and perhaps we will do some additional exploring and see if something can be worked out sort of more townwide for that. But it's my recommendation that since the, the will of town meeting wasn't actually held there, we would have lost the vote by three votes, that we just let that sit and that money will go back to the town as part of the reconciliation at the end of the fiscal year. Any thoughts, folks? Okay, so there we, let's go with that then. The next item, the Denit, Denit grounds. So one of the things I just wanted to touch base and see if, if this works for folks, to the extent that we have requests that come in, what I'm going to propose is that we do something similar to what we do for the financial warrants in that if a request comes in to me, I can check with Peter to make sure he's, no, and doesn't have any concerns, and we'll likely just approve the request, assuming it's all reasonable. And then as part of that, we'll bring that back as a follow-up item to our next School Committee meeting, just to let folks know what has been approved. What I, what I don't want to happen, particularly when we have sort of long periods like we will have from July to September where we're not in there, I just, I don't want to hold something up or not, or have to call a meeting for what will likely be a very simple request. So if that works for everyone, that's how I'd like to handle it going forward.
Do you need a motion on that, John, or are you just kind of?
I'm fine with it. I don't think I need a motion. I don't see anyone objecting, so we'll just, we'll just, I think, handle it and keep it simple. The other thing I wanted to just, just to raise here and see if folks wanted to discuss it and if we want to do anything else. We had had some discussions between our last meeting and this meeting regarding Denit grounds and care of the grounds, and I think at this point only two of the existing, two of the School Committee members were actually on the committee the last time we talked about it. So I just wanted to bring that back up. The last time we had reviewed this, five or six years ago. And the thinking at the time, or the pleasure of the committee at the time, was that, you know, the school would, would has authority over the grounds, but that they would essentially delegate the care of the grounds, one to the Highway Department for the regular maintenance, and then to the Recreation Committee and/or Paze, whoever was doing it for watering and any of the other sort of maintenance there. That was what was decided back then, and I wanted to open that up and see if that, if that still works currently, or whether we want to have any additional discussions about that.
Just a little background too. So REC has been doing, some of our budget this year is $2,000, and pretty much 1,500 of that goes to the sprinklers every year. So we're left with 500 usually to do porta-potties at the, both the fields, and that's pretty much it. So Paze has been handling, you know, the irrigation, I mean, the what is that called? The grass and all that stuff and the upkeep, the walking trail and things like that. And we don't mind doing it because we're using the fields. But it's probably, I would say, $2,000 a season for the two different fields, so say $4,000 total. So it's, it's a good expense, but we don't mind doing it as long as, you know, that we can still do like movie nights to kind of make some money to pay for that. That's fine.
And I think it's also something, Amy, we can, we can keep an eye on. And I know the REC, REC Committee sort of sits, you know, quietly there and gets its little 2,000 and all that, but if we need to start addressing that as far as, you know, like, look, this is the additional responsibilities and things like that, I'm happy to be, to, to, to help with that.
That sounds great.
And if we, you know, because at a certain point, I'm sure that the sprinklers, I'm sure the sprinklers didn't cost 1,500 five years ago. They probably were a little less, and they're only going to be a little more as everything goes on. So at a certain point, since that budget probably hasn't changed.
It actually dropped. It used to be, I think, 3,500, and now we're at 2,000. We don't know what happened.
Need to deal with that a little bit.
Yeah.
Come around next year. So I, I think it's, I think it makes sense to, to, since the, since the, the fields are primarily used from that recreation perspective, I think it probably makes sense to sit there, but certainly know that you certainly have my support and anything I can do to help. If the budget keeps dwindling, then we can, we can readdress that. Probably be some opportunities as well to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other items we want to talk on that piece? Okay. Next, MASC charting the course. Jason, did you want to take this one?
Yeah, so I just wanted to remind everyone, according to Mass General Law, we're all supposed to take a training within our first year of being on School Committee, which is called Charting the Course. But obviously with everything that's been going on in the past year, nobody's really going to come and check anytime soon to see if we've actually gone through that course. But MASC is trying its best to provide opportunities for people to get that eight hours of mandatory training under their belt. The most recent offering is a full in-person, two days online or a single day online to get all of those eight hours in. So ironically, it's June 12th, which I know happens to be the movie night. But MASC offers this for several times throughout the year, and we'll even be hosting it again in November when they have their annual conference down in Hyannis. If you want to go down to that conference and take some of the PD, you could also get your eight hours in during that session. But they're planning on continuing to do online because of how easy it is for people, but also to start offering the in-person version as well, also you can network and meet other School Committee members from other towns. Sometimes it's nice to have someone to bounce things off of that aren't on your own committee. So you can go to masc.org, that's the website, and check out Charting the Course, and you'll find those various options. Right now, it's a full day on the 12th for online, or it's a full day on the 12th in person at Neshoba Valley Tech, or you could do the morning of the 12th, in the morning of the 19th, to get your fully eight hours of training.
And I think I also, I saw, I know I got an email about that, so I'll try and kick that around. I'll look for that at the end of the meeting and shoot that around to folks as a reminder. And, and then again, if, if the June one doesn't work, then let's just make sure we keep that up. And Jason, if we can keep that sort of on our radar screen until we know that folks were able to do it, that way we won't run into any issues down the road, especially when we sort of come out of this COVID fog, as it may be.
Absolutely.
All right, so that sort of fits perfectly. Let's talk about future meetings. So when I initially put this on here, one of the things that I was thinking about was, is there a way for us to be able to allow for some remote participation in the meetings when we are back in the building doing it in person? And I, I think, and Jason, you can jump in here, but I think that some other School Committees have tried to do this, and it has been a little more than clunky, which, you know, we don't want to make it more challenging than it is. So I guess, couple, couple thoughts here. One, we have, our next meeting is in July, and then the next one after that won't be until September. I think certainly by September, we, we will be back in person, either because the state is requiring it or because we're, we're well past that point. I guess the question is, what if folks want to do for the July meeting, which is July 12th? I'm just getting confused there. I'm like, why does the 12th keep coming up as a number here? It's a different month. So July 12th would be that next meeting, and that would be our sort of closeout meeting. Are folks interested in doing that in person? Or do we want to do one more with Zoom? I believe the Governor is going to extend the remote participation, is working to do that?
So that hasn't been passed by the Governor yet. The Senate Ways and Means Committee was in session at 5:00 this afternoon, and they were debating it, and they were in favor of extending it to municipalities and local government agencies, but it has not been passed. So that would expire technically on the 15th with the end of the Governor's state of emergency.
Okay, so
Now, we do have the provision where if we have a quorum in person, we can have remote participation by other members according to our town bylaws.
I would ask that we do, do it in virtually, being that I work nights, so that's one less day that I'll have to finagle to try and get there. And moving forward, I'll, I'll figure it out from there.
Okay. So folks are okay with that, we can, provided that we can, might want to see what, what happens up on the Hill, but provided that we can, are folks good with doing sort of our last Zoom meeting in July, and then we would plan to resume in person in September? Does that make sense? Okay. Very good. And then, and then we'll, we'll see about, I mean, in an ideal world, it would be great to, because I think we're getting a lot more participation from other, other folks in the community and part of the school community, you know, being able to, to do this from home. And if there's a way that we can do it without it being too clunky, I would like to do that. So you know, Peter and Jill, I don't know if this is worth a conversation with, with Steve to sort of think about, you know, in the fall, is there a way that we could, we could have the screen? I mean, I just don't know quite how we do it. So maybe it's something we can take offline and have a discussion with him about that.
How much is due tomorrow, John?
You know, and there's, I think there's some other ways to deal with it too, as far as participation, that you sort of have to, any, just any comments that people would like to make who are on remote, would like, we need to make them upfront at the meeting so that, and then we wouldn't be going back and forth because it's going to be difficult to deal with sort of what's in the room versus what's, what's, what's going on on Zoom.
And John, that's, you know, that's what I've been talking about, some other committees that have already started doing hybrid meetings. They've moved public participation to either in-person, or if they want to do it via the Zoom, they just have to do it 24 hours before the meeting in writing to the Chair, and then the Chair can acknowledge them during the beginning of the meeting, and they can, they can say their part. So they, they get the opportunity as well. But it's not just a, a line of people that you're not necessarily anticipating showing up.
Right. Okay, so more to come, more to come with that, but we will plan for July to be remote unless we have to change that, and then we'll be in person back in the Denit Library in September. Yes, Jill?
So we have a little bit of experience with this from some of our other School Committees, and one of the things that we have done is we have worked with Area 58. In particular, the microphones are helpful if you're going to try to do a hybrid setup with some people remote and some people in person. And then you can only have one computer on because otherwise the sound will bounce off of each other and the, the audience won't be able to hear. So you'll need someone who monitors the chat or participation on a computer and lets people into the meeting. You need a projection screen so that you could see perhaps who's attending. But most importantly, I think that has helped is the actual microphones from ACT TV, which we do not have. But again, we have included Steve in other discussions with other schools. I don't know what, what might be unique to the Denit Elementary School, but I just wanted to mention that to you as well, as an option.
Great, yeah. And I have to reach out to Area 58 because they would, they would like to do some more work with us and get back to, back to filming. So I mean, I'll, why don't I start by doing that, reach out and talk to Rich and see what, what he, what he has to offer, what he thinks works, and then if we need to, we can get the necessary folks together and have a quick discussion about that going forward. Okay. Desi COVID-19 guidance updates, and then it's sort of been a flurry. Jason, did you want to just touch on some of the highlights?
Yeah, some of this is going to come through in our policy reads today. But the Plimpton Board of Health has been continuing to be a great partner and reaching out to us, letting us know what some of the changes to guidance are. So for the schools, the guidance pretty much hasn't shifted except for outdoors. They're planning on keeping their mask mandate in effect until the end of the school year, but they've already indicated that they expect schools to be open five days a week next year, fully in person. That even distancing will not be in effect. There will be further guidance coming out about masks primarily around elementary school age students. This probably has to do with vaccinations and just rates in our, in our state, but we do have some policies that we've walked back to what we had pre-COVID that we'll be doing a first read of tonight, and an adjustment to the mask policy, which will give our superintendent the authority to shift with new guidance automatically, instead of having to wait three weeks or three months for the policy to be approved through the normal process. Summer School Guidance does say that they'll probably be expecting kids to do exactly what we're doing right now in schools for distancing and masking.
All right. Any questions on that? On to the unfinished business, Denit Fields and Use by Donuts. That was a discussion we had at the last meeting. And Amy, we should probably redo it again here. I actually stopped up at the school the other day and see that we have plenty of signs out there that people aren't following. There's, there's certainly, certainly a number of signs. And then so the, the initial thought from the committee was an incremental approach. But I'd like to sort of hear whether there's been any, any change, anything, has anything been any better, or are we still having?
I, we haven't had soccer for a couple of weeks, so nobody was there this past weekend. The last week I was there, I picked up stuff a few times. I talked to Lily. She said she didn't see anything. It's still happening. I'm really not even sure what we're supposed to do at this point to make it any better. You see people pull in with their dogs, they let them run in the fields, and if they just picked up, it wouldn't be a big deal. But it seems to be an ongoing issue.
Okay. Peter, I know that when we first put, I think we had talked about this last time when we originally put up the, the the, just the bag area to have bags there that the school had put out some bags initially. Given that we're about to head into the summer, does it make sense to get a supply for the summer and just to keep that, keep that filled? And then, you know, maybe we can?
Paul was, Paul used to do, help us a lot with it, and I know he's out now, Peter. He used to come and help us. I mean, it's disgusting. We used to have to empty the trash. We used to take them out of the end and put them in the dumpster, and it's a lot. And but, but at least they were putting them in something, so we're happy with that. But I know Paul's out, so it would probably be, you know, we're asking some of the coaches or some of the, you know, husbands, the wives to help out, and you know, as long as they put You know, as long as they put them in the waste, that wouldn't be, you know, that's not, that wouldn't be a problem.
I mean, because then, because the next, the next step is to sort of say the field is off limits. And that, you know, that. You kind of hate to do that for the folks that are picking up after their dogs, especially for a whole part of the year when we're not using the fields. And it is a great safe area for a dog, especially a, you know, younger dog that really needs to run, to be able to just run.
Absolutely.
And and I think as we had talked about last time, I mean, there's a number of schools that just don't permit dogs, even any on the campus at all. So, you know, my hope is, is that we can, we can do this. And maybe one of the other things we can is. I can talk with. Town administrator, maybe we can put something up on the town's. Facebook page just to remind them for both sets of fields. And and note that, you know, that we need to pick up and we even say, and if we can't, then. You know, people can't do that, then we're going to have to take the next step. And. I don't, I don't know what else we can, maybe we can put some lights around the signs or something. There's a lot of signs. I hadn't, granted, now I hadn't noticed them until I was looking for them. But you have them, you know, at each of the points where you're entering the field and right at the gates as well.
Yeah, we bought two in the school, bought two. So they've got one at Holt, one there, and then I think there's three at Denit. You know, and just.
Do we have any sort of a message board, Peter? You know, one of those folding message board things?
We have one kicking around somewhere.
I'm just thinking maybe it makes some sense to to. Put something up at the top of the hill there when you come up saying, you know, just reminding people to please do that for a little while, just to see if we get any. Improvement. And if we don't, we're just going to have to not let them on the field.
In the interim, John, would you like me to get a supply just to kind of get us through the summer?
If we could, I think that would be a good opportunity. And then we can, we can work with with pays going forward about how to, how to keep things. But I think especially since, you know, there's, you know, the activity drops way down in the middle of the summer. I know you're going to do some periodic leagues, but. It's, you're not there as frequently and and that way if we can just keep that up, let's see if that. Maybe that's the issue. No one, people just forget to bring a bag.
Yeah. Take care of it.
Is there any way for us to deal with flagrant offenders? I mean, can we get in touch with? The police department or animal control?
Yeah, we pretty much know who it is too, Jason. Yeah. We we kind of know, we've seen it, it's happened right in front of us and we've said something. And nobody, they don't care. So it's kind of like, we're not really sure what to do at this point.
Yeah, because we don't have the authority to to really scare anybody. But. I mean, like you said, John, there's, there's good dog owners who are picking up after their dogs, but. And Amy, I think you're being magnanimous, saying as long as people pick it up, but. Going on the field, even after you pick it up, there's residue and residuals left behind. And kids are stretching and getting down on the ground. Doing warmups. It's still not sanitary completely. It's much better than not picking it up, but. I mean, if there is known individuals or suspicions, I wonder if we can get. Those people spoken to more directly, so it doesn't end up affecting the whole town.
Sounds like we need to follow up conversation offline. So. Let's, let's, let's do that. And in the meantime, we'll get some bags out there and. Try and just sort of ratchet this up a little bit. And then if we can figure out who the specific folks are, we'll have a, we'll figure out who should have that chat and. If that doesn't go anywhere, we'll take the next step. Oh, boy. All right, on to better things, playground.
I'm not sure if I've ever had to follow the. The dog fields.
Going up from here.
I'm not sure what to say. Well, I'll just share with you the good news. So as you know, we have gone out to bid for the playground. And we have done it in two components. I've spoken about we're going for the materials so that we can actually. Have the playground that is wanted, the playground that would best suit the Denit Elementary, what is felt is needed for that playground. So we've looked into two sources. There's FAC 10, FAC 104, which is a state contractor under Operational Services Division. And there's also the Mass Higher Education Consortium, which runs in a similar manner. All the products are. Have go out to bid and the the vetting has already been done for you. So we've looked at both of those sources and the pricing is very similar. Where now, the bids that we did go out for the installation have come back in. As some of you may know, we did have a walkthrough of the the site, a pre-bid submission walkthrough of the site was not mandatory, but we did have a couple of vendors that were there. Got to actually kind of get a lay of the land. And it was nice to kind of hear what they. With the, with the, what the vision was. So it was, I enjoyed listening to that. So as last Wednesday, which is when the bids were due, we had, we received four bids. With a variety of. Rates. What's happening right now is. The design architect engineering firm is vetting through all of their references. They're doing it for all of them. They have gone through all the references that are included in the bid submission packages. And they're now seeking out references that maybe weren't included there. Just so we can have an idea of what we're, with the rest of the process will be like. There is not an additional delay on the products. They're saying, they're saying five weeks for the products to come in. So that's kind of what the estimate was on that, the timeline on that. And we're just waiting to make sure the vendors are vetted and we have checked all the references and then the bid can be awarded. But I'm glad that we did have four separate vendors that did submit bids for that. So it was a, it was a nice array of folks. Are there any questions on that?
Real quick, barring any unforeseen delays, what what's the timeframe we're looking at? From start to finish?
The timeframe that we have is that it would be substantially complete by August 15. And then it would be complete prior to school opening. And there is a clause in there that has a. A factor for every day that it's not. Ready. Unless we can agree, there may be a point where we have to make some arrangement just because of the current situations, but. That's what the content, that's what the bid documents say.
So we get a free slide for every weekday late?
Well, I'm not sure it's going to be a slide, but.
Hey, I'll take a swing, whatever we can get.
We'll try to be creative.
Any other questions from committee members? Okay, Kate Johnson?
Hello, I just had a question if you're going to release the forbidders information publicly and what their bids came in at.
Um, I think we will be able to do that. I think we're just now, we just need to make sure we vet all of those. And then we could probably release that information.
Typically, it's released before bed. You have to vet anybody. So I'm just curious, like where the standings were for people.
What do you mean where the standings were?
Well, who the lowest bidder was, first and foremost, is. Kind of the most important thing usually with this type of bidding. So I'm just curious where the bids came in at.
All right. Well, it was a public bid opening. If I, I would have loved to have had the chance to. Make sure these are all valid and bids that we can move forward with, but. We, the bid was based in two sets, was split into two sections. There was the base bid. We received four bids on that and they range from 105,000 to 178,000. And then we also had an alternate, alternate number one, which is to to complete the balance of the surface with. Rubberized surface instead of the wood chips. And those range from 24,000 to 113,000. So in total, the the base bid plus the alternate went from $154,000 to a total to 232,000. So. You know, there was a wide variety there and we were just confirming that they're all looking at, they had all the same information. But we're just wondering if there was an issue with how they interpreted. But I mean, it is what it is on how it's been submitted.
Okay, so based on that, when do you anticipate, looking at the numbers, having them vetted and voting to. Whether or not you are going to accept alternate one based on. The price discrepancies on that one.
Well, right now, it's, you know, the base bid is our first priority and would love to do alternate number one, but. If something has to give, that's what we would have, that's a spot we would have to give. So base bid number one includes all of the equipment. It includes. The material under the swings. It includes. The surfacing in that immediate swing. In some of the other areas, but it does not include the whole playground. So we'll, I hope that in the next couple of days, we will have that information complete.
I had also had an email discussion with you about regards to warranty of the installation. And I still find it a little concerning that there is not a documented. Warranty in place for your installers on this. Because who's to say that you have an installer come in? Put in the equipment 60 days after they have gotten their final payment, you have a bolt shear or something snap, the concrete. Starts spalling. There's a number of different things that could happen. And at that point, if you don't have a warranty in place, what's our recourse to remedy the situation at that point?
The warranty that we're using as of right, it was the warranty for all of the materials. And I think I, in that email exchange, I did mention to you the timeframe and. Some of the timeframes are quite lengthy with those materials. The requirement of the bid is that the vendor installed according to the. Specifications as laid out by the manufacturer.
Which I can understand, and I understand that manufacturers and their products have warranties and a lot of them are. Quite copious. And you're going to say they have a 99 year warranty. That's great. I get it. But I'm more concerned about warranting the workmanship. Of the installers, because you can have your consultants come in, look at the work, say it's done with accordance. But what if something happens? There's always components where things break down. And if they do break down, at that point, your installer is not going to want to come back if they've been paid in full. And at that point, you have to pay somebody else to come in and pay to fix it. So the playground remains operable. I I'm just concerned that this is not being taken into account because this is something that happens so frequently on these jobs.
Well, I think you make a valid point. You know, unfortunately, that was not included as part of the original bid package and we can't go back and add that now. I guess we will learn. We, we're relying on the factor that we've asked the installers to install everything according to specifications and. That that would lead us in the best direction possible and would give us the best product and installation possible.
So given a substantial completion date of August 15, which is. A little bit up in the air right now. If you have a substantial completion date and you give the installer that. There is statute that says you have to issue them a final payment within a certain period of that point. And if they're issued the final payment, say in September, something happens in October, I'm just, I don't want this to fall back on, say. The custodians or any other maintenance staff to say, oh, now we have to figure out something happened. That's not their scope. That's not their line of work. I just want to make sure that there's something for recourse for the kids if something did break.
If something did break, I believe we would use all methods possible to to reach out to the installer to see what we, some remedy that would exist for us. And if that did not work, then we would have to move to our next step to find somebody who was more, more of an expert in that field and perhaps. The manufacturer, maybe we could actually then find out what our next best option would be. I can't go back and change the original bid specs. Unfortunately, I'm an expert in playgrounds of. Tried to make this work the best I can. And so you may have found a flaw and that's.
I would just stress then at this point, as you're having Beals and Thomas go through and do their vetting, that they ask the question of these installers. If they have had to come back and remedy a situation, were they responsive? Did they do it cost effectively? And and stress that because there are unknowns there.
And that's why we're actually, we're, we're trying to go through. Entities they work for, not part of their reference list, because obviously their reference list would be the vendors that they had the most positive experience with. So we're actually reaching out to other, to other vendors who have reached out to. The company that's manufacturing the products to see who, who, if they've had any issues with them. We're just trying to cover our bases. We're just trying to. Make the best choice for the equipment, the installation, and make the best financial choice as well.
I I think that's wise. And I think that you will get some different responses when you expand your scope with the references, for sure.
Yes, I agree with you. And that's why we decided to do that, because we just, this is just too important. This is, you know, this has been in the works for many years and. It's been a goal for a long time. So we want it to be the best playground and I. We want it to last as long as possible. We want to see if that, how that 99 year warranty works out.
I just want to add one quick thing also is that based on alternate one, I'm really hopeful that we can make alternate one. Work because what I've been seeing in my business for the cost increase on that. It's, it's wise to do it now if it's responsible fiscally for us to do it.
I'm. Hopeful. The only thing is the the materials are very expensive for that, and they have been very expensive for a long time. So we did, we did seek out additional information on what it would cost to furnish the rest of the playground with that material. And it's about $99,000 to buy the materials. Then it has to be installed. There would be a small savings on the wood chips, but the savings on the wood chips would be minor. It would be. You know, less than $10,000 savings on the wood chips.
Right.
So we're just looking at all of our options. We know it, funds we have that have been made available to us. And so we're just going to try to make the best choices that we can.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I follow up a question on the warranty real quick, Christine?
Yes.
The warranty issue. Were these companies approached about a warranty and they declined? Or has this just not even been discussed with?
The warranty on the parts of the warranty from the installer.
The installer.
That was not part of our bid.
But has it even been discussed? Because whether it was in the bid or not, these companies may actually have a standing warranty on their. Installation that. Basically, because even though it wasn't in the bid. It could be something that they offer on their craftsmanship or.
I can check on that. I've had to rely on. The design architect engineering firm that we use it because I think you could tell from this conversation that I'm not a playground expert. So I've been trying to rely on the expertise of others that are well versed in this. And. The company that we're using is very well versed in installing playgrounds and. Putting these kind of projects together, much larger projects that we have. So I've learned a lot and I will continue to learn because there are, you know, you learn from your mistakes, I guess. And I've been really, I'm really optimistic with the expertise that we're getting from them and they understand what's going on in the industry and they're familiar with most of the companies that we've had that have submitted bids. So I'm. I'm optimistic on that, that it's a, they're all reputable companies that have worked with these products before. And I will ask about that, if that's something we can discuss with the companies, the installers.
Yeah, because that's like, that's not an additional line item cost per se. You know, most companies that install anything will warranty their installation for some length of time.
Right.
Yeah.
It was not in the original bid package, so we would have to see how that discussion went.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
Well, and then, you know, the, the only other thing I would add is that, you know, the goal here is if we are not able to do the full surface. Then there's also the hope that we could at least utilize what funds we have to do more than what we. What we have. I mean.
Right. I remember Jason had mentioned the area that. He felt was the primary importance. And I think the design person agreed with that, that if we could get that area done, that would. Give the most accessibility to to students that would need that.
And I appreciate the fact, Christine, that you brought in. Some greater expertise on playgrounds because, you know, Peter and I were handling it a lot. We had some help from some parents who did have some background with playground design. And they're actually the people who explained to us where it would be most beneficial for students to to be able to access. And also for falls, you know, right around that play structure area would be great if we could add rubberized surface. Ideally, we would love it. If we could have a fully rubberized surface. But just looking at the numbers right now, we're already approaching a third of a million dollars. About 10% of our annual budget for the Denit, which is quite substantial for us. But. I appreciate all your work. I appreciate you bringing in the expertise, but. And John, if we do get these bids all sorted out and ready to review in public session. Would we consider reconvening for that sole purpose so we could award a bid and get that ball moving since there's the five week? You know, to get the materials and start the process.
I'd be happy to, I'd be happy to put another meeting on the calendar. Once we, once we know we have everything set up and. Be a quick meeting, but we could do that and maybe the second read of the policies to get those moved along. And. Again, everything we can get done over the summer, it's better to do that because, you know, this is not just. Putting in this playground is taking out the other one. So it's not. Use one versus the other. So.
You know, and that's my hope with, even though I know there's the five week delay with the materials coming in, they can start removal of the old playground, they can start regrading their land, they can't start, they can't start taking care of all those items. So they'd be ready for the installation by the time the products got here, the materials got here. I had a conversation today with Beals and Thomas and they, they will be done with this phase of the project this week. So if that helps with your timing.
Yeah. So just, Christine, if you can just give me a heads up when you, when you are ready, then we'll, we'll.
Okay.
Work with folks to see what, what time makes the most sense.
All right. I'll do that.
All right. Um, solar project. So, uh, we did, we did vote the agreement at town meeting. Um, so everything is moving along there. Um, I did have an email this afternoon from the solar company. They've submitted the inter, interconnection application with EverSource. Um, they don't expect any particular issues. And so now we're at the point where they would like us to take a look at the PPA lease and pilot documents and get that sorted. Um, their goal, if we can get that done in the next two to four weeks, is that they would, they'd like to have, um, get a structural inspection in place by the end of June. And perhaps even start construction in July with the goal of getting everything sorted out before the students are, um, before the students are back in the building. So with any amount of luck here, we can have a new playground and solar panels for September. So we'll see where that goes. So more to follow there. Okay, uh.
Yep.
Sorry, a quick question. Um, just being at the town meeting and, and seeing the verbiage that was passed. Is there a document or revised language that captured the scope more specific to the location of the solar paneling?
Yeah. So we, we amended it on the floor. And so the, the actual, uh, the actual documents that were, that are, um, that the town clerk had that, that are part of the record would include that verbiage that, that restricted it to the, to that rear roof area.
Okay.
Yeah. So, yeah. So that was a, that was a, that was a good catch of town meeting. And, um, uh, but no, we amended it and, uh, and, and limited it just to that piece so that we're not giving away, uh, control of the full dentit building for solar to the Silver Lake one. It wasn't the intent. At least not yet, right? One thing at a time. And we don't want any, any other panels on any other roof that I don't, I don't want a bird landing on it at this point. Keep it together for another five years until we can replace it. Um, okay. Any, any other questions on that? Okay. Uh, standing committees. Um, Jill, I believe administrator, you did meet because we then, uh, but we can talk more about what that was for Union Thirty-One. Negotiations, we already, we already referenced that. Uh, so Union Thirty-One, uh, held a meeting on May twenty-seventh, at which point we, uh, and, and anyone else jump in if I, if I've gone astray. Who else was there? But we, uh, we actually approved, um, the evaluation for our superintendent. Um, and we also, um, approved a, um, let's see how I best put this. Uh, we, we wanted some of our administrative staff to actually make sure they took some vacation and had full proper time off. So we actually, we gave the superintendent the opportunity to shut, pretty much shut the administrative offices down for a week this summer. I think at the end, the end of July. And i- in doing that, we are, we are, we're not making people take vacation for that time. But they're going to continue to get their pay, but that week things will be shut down, which means that they can, they won't be getting all sorts of emails. They won't, they will actually get a break to sort of reward, uh, the administrative office and some of the, uh, and, uh, some of the administrators as well within the, uh, high school and, uh, middle school, um, to take a break. So, um, that was a lot of discussion about that. Um, and, uh, Jill was able to communicate that out, uh, today. And so that was approved by Union Thirty-One and Silver Lake School Committees. And, um, people are very, very appreciative of that. And I think it is the last week of July, if I'm correct, Jill, right? Yep. So if we need anything from the administration, let's do it before or after that. And I think that was it for Union Thirty-One, right? I don't think we have anything else. Uh, Dan, any update on, uh, PAC? You're on mute, sir.
Uh, you guys don't want to hear me anyway. The, um, as of the last meeting, um, a few weeks ago, there was six new enrollments. Uh, PAC itself is doing well financially. And, um, Dypna has taken on the, um, director's role for an additional twenty-five thousand dollar bump in pay, which, uh, that would be in an individual, um, position, the salary was a hundred and twenty-six thousand. And she is taking on the duties for an additional twenty-five thousand dollar, uh, pay raise. So PAC itself, they're saving a hundred and one thousand dollars on, um, that salary. And then with the six new enrollments, that, uh, that shows us up pretty well financially. And that was the only, uh, new updates.
Thank you. Any questions? And then on to policy, Jason.
So I'm going to go through some of the changes we made in pretty good depth. But I would appreciate a motion to waive the actual reading of the policies.
Make that motion to, uh, waive the reading.
And do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Uh, we'll roll call. Dan?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Nikki?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
And I M E S as well.
I really appreciate that. And, uh, I bet you will too. If you haven't had a chance to go through what Lisa sent, uh, earlier today, uh, she did a really good job tracking the changes that are going into place. We did have a policy subcommittee meeting last week, um, to try and update ourselves and bring us up to date with the most recent guidance from Mass Department of Public Health, the Governor, DUCI, CDC, WHO at all. You know, policy is a cumbersome thing. It typically takes us three months to change policy. So when they dropped the recommendation for students to wear masks outdoors at recess, we really got lucky with the verbiage that we had in some of our policies that we could automatically adapt. Uh, for example, if the state had dropped its mandate for wearing masks in school, um, like they did for the rest of the state on the twenty-ninth, we'd be in a sticky situation because we have a policy on the books for masking. So, um, we tried to take some of the language out now that we don't think we're going to need in September. And we also need, tried to give the superintendent a little bit of authority to be able to adapt to changes and, and guidance, at a quicker, more responsive rate than we could through policy alone. So, um, the face covering policy, E B C F A, we amended to saying that the superintendent, in consultation with the nurse leader of the district, has the authority to modify or suspend the Silver Lake Regional Schools and Union Thirty-One Schools mask policy to keep it in line with DUCI guidance, mass DPH guidance and CDC guidance at all, without further authorization or votes of individual school committees. So once this gets passed through, Jill could automatically adjust to new guidance and new policies from the state to make sure our kids, you know, don't have to wait for us to get together and have votes on these matters. Okay. So if I don't hear anything, I'm just going to keep going. We had amended, um, E E A, which is student transportation, to give Jill some latitude to suspend some of our policies, uh, with withdrawing that and reinstating our student transportation services policy to its original intent, uh, pre-COVID. The same is true of, uh, E E A E C, which is our student conduct on school buses. And E E A G, which is student transportation in private vehicles. Again, we're taking away, um, the superintendent's authority to be able to modify these policies, um, now that we're seeing, um, the COVID emergency is being lifted. Also in policy, G C A, professional staff positions, um, same language, we're withdrawing the ability for the superintendent to laterally change those, um, because of the COVID pandemic and going back to its original intent. In I C, I C A, which is the school year and the school calendar, uh, we're taking out part three and part four, which were added in to give us flexibility with the length of year and the amount of hours, um, of education per year. Again, this was in keeping with the guidance we were given last June from DUCI. And we're going back to the original intent of one hundred eighty school days, uh, nine hundred hours of structured time, uh, for elementary schools and nine hundred ninety hours of structured time for our secondary schools. So it's back to the original intent of that policy, uh, I D, which is about the school day. Also taking away, uh, the flexibility, uh, because of COVID regulations and going back to the full definition of what a school day is. We are recommending a full rescind of I I B, which is about class size. This allowed the superintendent to suspend, um, any class size provisions. So we're rescinding that now and going back to original intent and language. Uh, file J H, policy J H was about student absences and excuses, uh, excused absences. And we're taking out, uh, any language that would have, uh, excused students because of, um, COVID situations. And going back to the original intent of the policy. And on to J L C C, which is about communicable diseases. This was a policy we always had on hand. We're taking out some specific language, um, that gives, again, the superintendent the authority to modify this. We are leaving in a section that was COVID-specific, but we're taking out subject to the provisions of the back-to-school plan. And we've modified this to, the superintendent may establish protocols for tracking student contacts as a mean of locating others from who students may have contacted or exposed other persons to the COVID nineteen. Such protocols will be consistent with the law and regulation and be consistent with the standards to protect the privacy of students, their families and other persons. So understanding that COVID might still be around, but the emergency might not be there. That's the rationale for that change there. Moving on to J R A, this is about student records. And, um, with the amount of media that we've been including, um, with hybrid learning, with virtual learning, you know, a lot has come into light about the privacy of students when they're at home or when they're learning in a remote or hybrid manner. So we actually thought that this third paragraph should be kept since, uh, we've been saying, since the get-go of the pandemic, we don't learn some new techniques and strategies we're going to implement even after COVID is over. You know, we've, we've kind of missed an opportunity. There's already lots of people talking about how we're going to adapt some hybrid and virtual learning into regular education as we move on. And this really protects the rights of those students' privacies to make sure full disclosure is given if audio or visual or any remote type of recording is ever being done with a student and having consent of parents. And moving on to K I, visitors to the school, um, this still allows the superintendent to propose suspension or modification to district policies regarding visitors to school building during the school day and after school hours. It took out, subject to the current emergency declaration, which is set to expire on June fifteenth. So that is the summary of, of all the changes. I just wanted to make sure you were clear on what we were doing and the intent behind before we vote the first read.
Any questions?
I promise I won't go through all that during the second read. I just wanted to make sure y'all knew what we were changing. We're really going back, uh, primarily to the language we had prior. And we're saving some good bits of policy that came through the pandemic to protect our students and their privacy in the future. All right, Mr. Chair, if there's no, um, conversation, I make a motion to accept the recommendations on policies, E B C F A, E E A, E E A C, A, E E A E C, E E A G, G C A, I C, I C A, I D, I I B, J H, J L C C, J R A, and K I.
I'll, I'll second that. I just want to hear Jason say it all again, though.
We'll make him do it next time. Uh, so we'll do a roll call, Dan?
Yes.
Yes.
Nikki?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
And I M E S.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, we don't have anything on capital improvement. So Jason, this is apparently your part of the meetings legislative.
And so I'm trying, I'm, I'm going to try and be brief. So we're like halfway through the state budget right now. Uh, the House is done with, um, their portion of it. Unfortunately, uh, they decided to fence off a certain amount of funds for enrollment increases that the superintendents in the school committees of Massachusetts have been telling the state legislature is coming. We know we had about a three percent enrollment decline between our twenty-nineteen September, uh, October one number and our twenty-twenty October one number. So we were really asking the legislature to allow us to use our number, whichever was greater, our, our two thousand nineteen or twenty-twenty number. And they want us to hold off and see what our October one, twenty-twenty-one number is, which means every single district in the state who sees an increase in their, uh, enrollment is going to be fighting for this small chunk of money. Uh, so we are talking to our friends up at the Senate because currently the Senate Ways and Means Committee is looking at the budget to try and see if they'll allow, uh, the twenty-nineteen or twenty-twenty number to be used. Doesn't seem like there's much movement on that right now. But we've got to fingers crossed. And once it's done with the Senate Ways and Means, it'll go to the full Senate. Then they'll send it to conference committee, which is where the House and the Senate try and come to reconciliation on the differences. And they'll send it off to the governor who could either accept the budget, uh, he does have line item veto, or he could veto the entire budget and then it would be back to legislative branch. So, uh, having a budget done by June thirty is still, um, something that could happen this year. But it's seeming more and more unlikely every single day.
All right. Thank you. Christine, I did, at the last minute, do some signal signature warrants, if you have that information and want to.
I do. I do have this information. Um, today, nine warrants totaling two hundred eighty-two thousand seventy-seven dollars and seventy-nine cents were electronically sent to the superintendent in John Williamson. And just before this meeting, I saw they were approved. Thank you very much.
Yeah. There was some, some issue with Gmail and, and, uh, the Adobe Sign program, but we somehow got it fixed. I'm not sure.
At least it made it work.
I'm not sure. I mean, she waved a wand because I found the email, but it wouldn't work. So, you know, you rescued it from spam. Everything was, there's no links in it. So that is good. Um, okay. No dentit health and safety advisory committee update. So that moves us on to CASA. Do we have any update there, Amy?
Uh, I talked to Sarah today. Um, a couple of things they have coming up. They have the staff luncheon in a couple of weeks. That's the last one for this year. Um, they also received a local cultural council grant, which they will use next year for an enrichment program. She said she's working on, there's some open positions with CASA. She's working on a post for that. She'll hopefully have a early fall. And, um, that was pretty much it. Just a good wrap-up for the year.
Yeah, they did an amazing job, especially baskets. I mean, that, that ended up being, um, in some ways, well, I heard from a number of parents, almost, almost more fun because they, they live stream the whole thing. And so everyone kind of got involved with it. That's, that's tough because I know it was a tough beginning to the year for them to try and.
Considering the year they, that we all had, they did a great job.
Excellent. Okay. Mr. Veneto.
Thanks, John. I appreciate that. Um, as you can tell by your calendars, it, it's June first. We've actually made it to the end of the school year, which is amazing. I couldn't be prouder of the staff, the families, the students. This, this took a lot of work this year. Let's just put it that way. We're working as hard as we can to create a, a normal end of the year for our students, which again, under not normal circumstances is challenging. We do have a half-day tomorrow. Uh, we have our senior parade coming by on Thursday. It's a nice tradition that they start at the high school where they have former dentit students who are graduating. They come back down to the school. Get a chance to see some old teachers and, and see the property. And it's a, it's a really nice tradition. We're looking forward to that. Mrs. Hempel can attest to the fact that we have an enormous bike ride to school day coming up on the eleventh. The numbers did throw me off a little, Amy, but you know, it's, it's going to be fun. That same day on the eleventh, our sixth graders will be going up to the middle school for step-up day. We're scheduling our moving on ceremony for the seventeenth at five o'clock with the anticipation that Friday, the eighteenth, will be the last day of school. So that's kind of the, the big picture school update. Like I said, we, we can see the finish line at this point. And, um, thank you to everybody involved. It's, it's, it's been a tremendous group effort. And as far as the staff update, I'll probably have a little bit more information on that as the school year does wrap up. Uh, we might see a little bit of movement among staff and I'll be sure to keep everybody posted on that.
And, um, one thought, Peter, do we have any changes in our, uh, kindergarten numbers? And one thought, Peter, we have any changes in our kindergarten numbers?
No, that's holding tight right about forty.
That's not a small number.
No.
All right. Christine, should we do the financial?
Yes. Are you getting sick of me yet?
Well.
Ever.
Thank you for patiently listening. Our FY twenty one budget continues to sustain sustain the operations of the Denne Elementary School, even this unique year. If you have a chance to look at the new package tonight, there was a copy of the budget for tonight. You there are a handful of deficits that will easily be absorbed within their budgeted categories. Just a couple of things I want to bring to your attention. If you do look at the detail on page two, under the technology section, which is the two, four, five section. There is a deficit of eleven thousand eight hundred in the technology hardware line. As you may know, we had CARES Act funding earlier in the year, and we were able to make some significant purchases through there that in some of them were for electronic, for technology items. And that kind of shifted with the needs and the priorities we're going to be within the budget. But our technology director, Steve Pellow, has found what will what will work best with helping us continue to move forward. So he's working within the parameters of the CARES Act funding that he had, and then also the technology budget that he's had. But he's he's prioritizing his purchases so that all this makes sense and will help us continue to move forward and do the best we can for our students. The other area you may notice is as you get to the special education count, it's actually right near the very end. There are sufficient balances within transportation, contracted services to get us to the end of the year. But there is a deficit right now in our tuition tuition line of eleven thousand dollars. That will be eliminated when we get our final circuit breaker payment in. So in this year, we have used fully used our operating budget, fully used the current year circuit breaker. And we'll just step into our current year circuit breaker. So we had a few changes, but we were able to make our way through there pretty well. And then in the other justification, which is the last area, we are currently at a balance of five thousand dollars. Just keep in mind, this does reflect what happened at town meeting, what was voted at town meeting. So all the transfers that happened that night are reflected in this financial. And then I just wanted to mention that currently we do not have access to any CARES Act funding that we had previous in the year. But I was at a meeting last week in Tom O'Brien, the the treasurer of Plymouth County was there. And what he did say is in September, they expect to reallocate any funds that have not been spent as of that point in time. And reallocate them back out to the cities and towns within Plymouth County. So they maybe went to come with that, but that was the update that we received. Are there any questions?
Yeah, so I I did move, you know, we did move the three thousand dollars in to help offset the cost of the folding tables and anything else there. So hopefully that helps. Are there any other lines where we have? I thought I was, and I can't find it now. And of course, I should have marked it. I thought the building. I thought the building maintenance line didn't have so much spent out of it. We're waiting to do some stuff or?
There are a lot of things that we do not have invoices for yet. But let me just double check. I just want to make sure it's not nothing alarming. Well, if you, so if you look at that line right now, because of the transfers, there's eighty eight thousand dollars available there. It's the L O four zero 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 four two two one hundred, the contracted services line.
Oh, so did the, so the, so this reflects the thirty three and the.
This reflects everything that was moved into that.
Forty was moved into there.
And but I did actually did speak with Matt Jerky, today, the facilities director, and he is, he's on target to get the. The trees removed, the paving. And there's one, and we've already done all the work on the cistern except for they're going to replace the float so that they are with, actually, it was specified when it was originally done. And we we have that in target for all that to be either done, completed, or in process, but before the end of the year.
Do we anticipate with everything else that we've got to get done, any excess sitting in that building, building line?
I would not be surprised if there was some dollars available. There, I know that Matt has been talking with. Principal Veneto about some siding issues that are on his building, where there was some destruction of siding from previous storms. So we're just trying to make the best use of our of what we have available to us.
Yeah, and and the sightings, the sighting is on my radar screen as well from a town properties perspective. Right now, we're going to have to deal with that over a number of years. Some sides are better than others, but this is not a lifetime product, as I think it was originally sold to.
The the western facing wall is the one that's most impacted right now. Matt and I had a a long conversation about that not too long ago.
It's a big wall, too.
Yes, it is.
Just so that everyone's up to date, it's the the siding, even though it looks like it's aluminum or something like that, it is not. It's a fiber board. And so it's really great until the paint cracks. And then once the paint cracks, the water gets in there and it disintegrates. So it's 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 it's. So it's not, it's not optimal. So eventually, we're going to need to do, probably get the whole building done, but there are some of the walls that that look fine. So it's probably going to be a phased approach where we'll go around and rectify that with, you know, a a more proper. You know, quote unquote, lifetime type of siding. Yeah, fiber board is great, except when you put water to it, because then it's sawdust and it just soaks it up.
Every time you bring up the siding on the the Denne, I have flashbacks to the roof on Silver Lake High School and Middle School, you know? So this could be something that eats up a lot of our time over the next couple of years.
But I think I think having Matt on the on the hunt here is is excellent. Because I've come up with a plan and we had talked about it to come up with a sort of plan to stage it through and be able to. You know, figure out a way so we're not just dropping a big bill to to do it all at once. And we'll get it on the schedule and it will line it and will line up with townhouse roofs and everything else that needs to be fixed around here. And we'll get that sorted. But you know, Peter, I I every time we have a town meeting, I do get comments from 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 people who attend. About how great the school does look, considering that we did the renovation in two thousand and three. And so you're coming up on twenty years and the building doesn't look it. So that's a testament to the work that you guys are doing and and what we do at the end of the year here to try and get some stuff sorted.
Absolutely. No, our crew does a wonderful job and and the kids are respectful of the building and it does, it looks brand new. Every time we have guests and they're amazed at how clean it is. So that definitely nod to them.
Right. Thank you. Mr. Lynch.
Thank you. Good evening. Inside your packet, you received the curriculum instruction and assessment update. So I just wanted to highlight a couple of new pieces. Under professional development, the two members of the professional development council from Denne, Mr. Veneto and Ms. McBride. Have been helping out planning the August thirtieth return and. Carrie Mathias from Silver Lake High School and some audio visual students went over to then on Thursday and recorded some teacher interviews with. Denne staff and. We're going to compile all those for kickoff in August to really reflect on the kind of year we've been through. And to keep the focus on the staff and the efforts that were made. So I appreciate the efforts of Mr. Veneto to organize that and also some intra district district collaboration. To all come together and and work on that. So that was a success from last week. We're also working with the District Diversity Equity and Inclusion Group. Ms. McBride and Ms. George from from the Denne help out with that. And we're working with two facilitators, Dr. Chris Taylor and Dr. Des Floyd. To look at where, to take the baseline of of where we are now in in our district and to build our capacity. And support our staff and students to make sure that all students and families feel welcome, safe and supported. So we're excited about everybody working together on on that. And in person MCAS is finishing up. And at the bottom of the form, it has the the grant updates. With the updated funding totals for S R one, S R two. And and S R three, as as well as when those grants expire. So right now, just in terms of timeline. We are nearing the end of S R one and preparing to write and apply for S R two and in FY twenty two. So you'll see those allocation amounts for Plimpton. And as well as the quick reference guide for S R three. And I I believe, John, you had asked to add that to the agenda. So I I just found that three page overview that's, I think, for complex. Elements, it it does help to simplify it a little bit, but. It's. So I I think I'll just stop there on the the first item, which was curriculum instruction and assessment update, just to see if. The the committee or anybody has any questions about those components.
Any questions, Jason?
It's thrilled to hear how much work you've been putting in, Ryan, to the diversity, equity, inclusion, to hear that we have Denne staff members involved in that as well. You know, I know with things going on in the the nation and just in our own town that, you know, thinking about these things and how we can integrate. Into our curriculum and our community are important. So I appreciate the work that you and your team have put into that, that our Denne members have put into it as well. I was just thinking about the S R three funds, and I know we're not even there yet. Just with some of the ways it can be allocated. You're right, that three page write up is a lot better than the forty two page one I read from the Department of Ed. Recently, but you know, Peter had recently sent out a survey to parents about, you know, after school clubs. You know, and I was wondering if it wouldn't make sense to maybe put some seed money from some of our S R funds into that. Since it, you know, helps with the community building and the social emotional health of our students. And Peter, I I didn't know if you in the past had paid staff to run clubs. And, you know, how long were your clubs run for and what was the typical, the payment for the staff for those clubs?
So what we had done in years past is. I'm thinking of the last one, Ms. Cardinal did our choral program after school. Whatever the contractual rate is, Christine may have, there was, I want to say around twenty five dollars an hour. If memory serves, but the kids would or people would just basically sign up for it. She ran two sessions of the choral program just to do a winter concert and then a spring concert. It it took care of itself. It was it was pretty much. Yeah, it wasn't certainly wasn't a for profit. It was just just to be able to put it out there. It was challenging in that we wanted to offer that program, but what we typically done with course, there was a mandatory class for students in grades five and six. And it it just became a challenge to try to try to squeeze everything in. So it made more sense for us to do after school.
Yeah, I I mean, what I'm thinking is i- if we could offer an amount of money to make it more attractive to teachers. To to offer courses that they're interested in doing and maybe use some of the U S R monies to offset the cost for for families. And obviously, we would have some sort of contingency for families who needed financial assistance. I think a little bit of a buy in would make sense, just to people, hey, I signed up for this. And then we could gradually go to, you know, it works out to pay the teachers with the amount we charge over like a three or four year rollout. But we could use some of the S R funds to put it in. And I like the idea of having a fall, a winter and a spring season. So you could have some shorter clubs, but then you could have like a club that goes all year long. So we have a contractual number for for clubs or was that specifically for that program in music?
In the contract, there is a rate for work done outside of the normal schedule.
Oh, like ad hoc?
Like, yeah, so a dollar amount per hour for additional things that go beyond the scope of the school day.
Okay, but there's nothing precluding us from setting a rate for an after school club.
I do not know the answer to that.
And I don't think there would be, but I could be wrong. I'm just.
We pay the teach, the staff member?
Yep.
I am not sure about that. I don't know.
Christine, correct me if I'm wrong. We've been kicking this down the road for a while. This is, I feel like it's a number of years that we've been trying to see how can we do this and do it effectively? Because we had the garden club as well.
What's different is that the way you're talking about this, using S R funds would be different because. The town of Plimpton does not have a school revolving account. Don't have a mechanism to collect fees and then pay a teacher.
Right.
And it it's a, it's a significant event to set up or be revolving account in the town. But with that, if we had already had the S R funds available, that would be, that would be something that could be done. Could use the S R funds to pay the staff members.
May maybe that makes sense to do it for the first year using S R. And then if we, you know, if we, if it's, if it's working well and we want to be able to get the revolving account set up, then we can go to town meeting and deal with that. Next May.
I just think if we. And I I could, I don't really care. I think it would be interesting if some teachers did an A M. And and I know a lot of them would prefer to do the P M, and that's probably when most parents and families would want to do it as well. But it could be interesting to offer either A M or P M. Maybe six week sessions for fall, six weeks for winter, six weeks for spring. And maybe three hundred dollars per club. That would be fifty dollars an hour. I don't know.
Just pipe in for one quick second. I'm sorry. I reached out to Peter, actually, because a couple of teachers had reached out to me about possibly doing some after school programs. So this was supposed to happen pre-COVID, then COVID hit, everything shut down. So we had brainstormed these ideas with drama and the garden club and all these things. But the payments to the teachers was always the issue. So I told Peter, you know, I can do something separately from pays, separately from everything, the school, pay the teachers a ten ninety nine and pay them. You know, a hundred and fifty dollars an hour as opposed to twenty five dollars an hour, you know? So that way, it's, they want to do it's a little extra money for them. And then also some of the other staff could also do it if they wanted to. It wouldn't just be for teachers. And then it would also give parents that little extra help after school and the kids can get, do something that they would enjoy. So that's where that kind of stems from.
Can I jump in real quick? You kind of answered my question, Amy, but now are we, are we limited to teachers? Or staff in general? So like, just say, and maybe planting a seed here. If we got a PGA instructor that was going to come out and teach the kids how to swing a golf club, we could hire somebody. That has nothing to do with our system.
Yeah, I said to do it separately, kind of, so like I would get my, the own insurance, cover the school, cover liability, all of that. And payroll would be separate from the school, so you're not having to worry about that, almost like if you brought the you, the Y M C A N. And they handled it and they paid and did everything that way. That was the idea. But, yeah.
Everybody notices that Amy didn't shoot down the golf idea, right?
I love it. Yeah.
There we go. That's two of us.
And I just wanted to say that we didn't have the mechanism because we did not have a revolving account would have made sense for, you know, after school activities. But we just didn't have the mechanism set up at that point in time. And when we called the town, it was a, it was a formal process it would have to go through. So we would have to decide that that's the path that we're going to go. How would, were the teachers receptive of that, about getting a ten ninety nine? I think the way with, but the the good thing about going on the the school, well, on the pay, through payroll is that it would be included on their W two at the end of the year.
Right.
Ninety nine is that to pay taxes or anything like that?
I told them if they want, if they'd rather get a payment via check, I can set up a payroll and pay it out that way and pay payroll taxes. That's not a problem either. I was talking with a couple of teachers. I don't know if they want me to say their names. I'm not going. But they, they, we had a list of probably about eight people within the school that wanted to do their cooking class or a garden club, a Lego club, robotics, things like that. And we had no idea. I went to Peter. I'm like, we really didn't have an idea if we were going to even have anybody that was interested. But we had about a hundred families respond and only three noes out of all of them. So that was, that was a good sign.
So we're still kind of in the information gathering stage and we're. You guys are on step L. I think we're on step B. We'll get there.
Well, maybe if something like what Jason is suggesting, we can see how that works. And maybe we have a real sense of the numbers that we would need. And then we could approach the town about establishing a revolving account for after school activities.
Yeah, and you know, there's even the possibility that we could, we could. You know, we we are thinking of doing a special town meeting in the fall. And so we could even, we could even do that, which would make it a little easier to do with it. But it also seems that there's perhaps some opportunity to to sort of do both of these things. You know, where where you could do. You know, you utilize some S R funds maybe for certain types of club. And then have others as well and just see if we can really flush out a good offering. But I think this is a, especially with everything that we've gone through over the last sixteen, seventeen months, this is probably more important than. Probably more important right now than it was even a year and a half ago to be able to to get. To be able to to get this out there and also to to, you know, help with the social emotional that that gives it much more than just being in the classroom. So I I think these are all great ideas and and we need to just keep, keep sort of moving forward and and thinking of ways to to make this work and even to. To build out a better program, it seems to me that we should probably establish a revolving account regardless. Right, it just, if if that's, if that's something that would allow us to be able to. Move money easier. Within the school, then then that probably, that makes a lot of sense. Um and and it's not something, you know, we have, we have enough of them at this point that have been established for various things that it it shouldn't be the uh, shouldn't be a unreasonable ask. So I'll I'll note that down and I'll talk to the town administrator about that and get it on their radar screen.
So I did have a couple of the other questions about S R funds if if we're done with that conversation.
Yep.
So um Ryan, just thinking about. Uh the fact that we have second step in our building and we had a couple of teachers a few years ago who went and got trained in the responsive classroom. Uh and kind of brought it back and the trainers being trainers, you know, bringing it back organically to the staff. I just think that maybe uh we could utilize some of those funds to investigate whether or not we want to fully adopt some sort of um social health curriculum. Using the second step as lessons, uh it just, the program doesn't seem to hold up on its own that well. Um when you don't have the common language, common verbiage being used throughout the building. And I'm not saying we necessarily adopt responsive classroom, but maybe look into training everybody in P V I S, but having. A consistent social health curriculum that we use K to six in the bill, just. Be in alignment and even potentially across the three towns, so when they get to the middle school together, those teachers can even. Have some of the common language to use with our kids as they come in. And I don't know when the last time we even addressed uh, you know, core values within the building, Peter, I I don't know when the last time you've had like enough time or resources. To look at core values with students, with staff, you know. And I'm not saying next year, just we have these funds and offer some professional development and some abilities to. You know, reflect on what's gone on the past eighteen months and things that you'd love to see happen in the building. You know, even potentially bringing in uh, you know, a consultant to sit down and work with who's not your evaluator, Peter. You know, that you can bounce ideas off of. Um I think that would be like bringing in somebody like Jack Shea. That you and I both know, someone. Who's been through the trenches before, you could sit down for a few weeks and, you know, really. Do some P D yourself with.
To to be fair and honest with you, Jason, it's been a long time. Um I'm I'm losing track of. We, oh boy, that's a long time ago that we had somebody that 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 kind of served as a. Like you said, an outside person who was not your evaluator that that we can bounce ideas off of, and we, we did do some P B I S training, probably. Oh boy, probably four or five years ago, and that might might even be longer than that. But no, I think that that's, and that's a good, good use of of. Those resources too, absolutely. I'm open to it.
And I I think we do have, one thing that I liked about the S R three, I went to the webinar Thursday was that um. Where requ- required to convene a stakeholder group, and as much as that's a requirement, there's also a huge benefit to really listening. Uh including students and staff on that and as many um. You know, our other key stakeholders for for Denny, and I think that will help us to get some. Uh really to listen well, um and to your point, Jason, I I think the the size of of the funding, i- it's, it's nearly. I don't want to overstate it, but it's, it's, it's almost like once in a lifetime in terms of um some of the. Work that um. We could fund with the eighty five thousand eight hundred for S R two and. Um and then two, I think it's two point two times that for for S R three, so I think it could really. Pave the way and um it will be good to get input from everybody about the specific needs and. Also try to keep it consistent across the district, so our students have that common. Sort of foundation for middle school, so I, it's exciting, it's a lot of work um for everyone and, but it's um. With all the grants, but I I think it's, there's so much possibility there.
Appreciate having you uh. At the helm with this, Ryan, I really do value your contribution since coming on. Six weeks before the pandemic and uh you did a great job bringing us through that storm, and I can't wait to see what you're gonna be able to do. Uh with this additional, you know, one time. Distribution of federal funds, but just um. Having a little bit of normalcy background, I'm excited to see you in your role, so thank you, appreciate your time.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And just so that I'm clear, so so we're allocated these funds, but then we have to, we have to submit. We submit applications for it, so it's sort of like they they have a check on what we're using for the funds. That's it, um so that's, so it's, even so, it's. It's sort of our funds, but they want to approve how we're gonna use each allotment on it, is that, is that the right way to think of it?
Yeah, they're specific targeted, so. To their the. Specifically combat the loss of instructional time, uh twenty percent has to be aimed at that for learning loss. There's some other pieces identified um. And. There's some mechanisms to. You know, convene the stakeholder group, but I think the umbrella is is pretty wide, and there were three buckets for. Academics, social, emotional and and operations, and I and I, it is a. Pretty wide um. There's a lot of allowances for the ways districts can use it, so I think it's pretty flexible, your your understanding is accurate, but I appreciate the flexibility that's in there.
Right, that's good to know. Okay, thank you. Jill.
Okay, um, thank you, in your package tonight, there is a meeting schedule for twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. And I want to draw your attention to uh Plimpton School Committee dates, which are listed there in the um orange color. And you'll see underneath there, the Joint School Committee. Meetings are listed there, you'll notice that we have. Put three proposed joint school committee meetings on the calendar. Uh we would like to try something different uh this upcoming school year and consolidate some of our presentations. So for example, in November, we would like to do our curriculum, special education technology and any shared cost changes in our November meeting. And then in February, we would like to present our shared cost. Budget vote and shared cost contracts, any shared cost contracts that would need to be voted. And then in April, it would be, um it would coincide with the administrative review. And we could provide a district update in terms of where we are uh with regards to our progress on different strategies that we have adopted towards our goals. Um so it may or may not work the way. We hope, but it's certainly something we're willing to try and um we thought, based upon the feedback we had received this year and willingness for people to try new things and new ways of presenting information that might help streamline. We thought this would be worth a shot. The. Please take a look at the meeting dates and see if there's any concerns that you may have. Um I would be asking for um a possible vote tonight if if the committee. Is willing and able.
So you're suggesting that folks don't want to come and deliver their fourth presentation to Plimpton?
They're more than willing to, um some of us who attend more than one meeting.
I think this is a, this is a great, great, great idea. You know, I mean, and for a lot of those presentations, you know, we really. Take the information in and we may have a format or two, but there usually isn't a huge amount of discussion. So doing it in in the, in this forum, I think makes sense, when we have a lot of discussion, it's a very big forum. To have four school committees together, but I I think it makes, that makes a lot of sense. Do committee members have any questions, comments, concerns with the proposed? Meeting schedule?
Then make a motion to move the meeting schedule as proposed by the superintendent.
I'll have a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, uh Dan?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Nikki?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Thank you, everyone. So next is the district update, um to add to some additional D E S I guidance and information. Uh one thing I would add is that districts will no longer be able to offer remote learning as a standard learning model in the fall, so that's something that parents should be aware of that we're anticipating for the fall. The U S Department of Agricultural Cultural School Meal Flexibilities that were announced on April twentieth are effective through June thirtieth, twenty twenty two. Regardless of the uh status of Massachusetts State of Emergency. And we do anticipate, as I mentioned in our last meeting, continuing with our summer meals program for students. Um at several sites in the district. And. Uh another. Piece of information, youths ages twelve and up can now be vaccinated with Pfizer covid nineteen vaccine. And for more information, there is a mass dot gov slash vaccines for youth website, but in addition, our school nurses, Nurse Beck. Has put out information with regards to um opportunities for students and parents who want to learn more about vaccinations for children. We have a number of summer learning opportunities this summer, uh Silver Lake Regional School District will be offering several summer learning opportunities to support our students and address the needs. That have emerged over the last two years, we will have an accelerated learning academy. And um it's designed to support students affected by the covid nineteen pa- pandemic, the program focuses on literacy, math and social emotional learning. The academy is designed to accelerate the student learning through engaging, standards-aligned, project-based lessons, this is for grades. Two through five and students entering grades three through six, so um this will be held at the Kingston Intermediate School. We have the Silver Lake Enhancement Program, this will be a summer program selected. Um students will be selected. From a pool of candidates, grade seven and eight invited students can participate. In order to enhance the transition to middle school, activities supporting their literacy, math and social emotional growth will be offered. And then finally is our extended year program, this is not a new program for us. But uh it is actually the child's I E P team that will determine whether the regression caused by the pandemic is substantial. And whether the child would require a greater than usual time to return to the achievement level prior to either the break caused by summer. Or gaps caused by the um the remote learning and the unique circumstances, but again, that's determined by the child's I E P team. Uh in addition, I just wanted to mention, because we had talked about building and grounds, we do have building and grounds use forms. Uh for each of our school buildings, and so if in fact, there is a community organization that's interested in using buildings and grounds. They can obtain one of those through the principal. The principal's office, I should say. Uh also, so that is part of our protocols, and then uh obviously, as mentioned by uh our chair tonight, we can discuss whatever. Proposals have been brought forward to the principal that um. For the committee's review. But I just wanted people to be aware that we do ha- currently have a, an internal process where people can fill out the form. Um and that helps us too, so that we don't overschedule or um say yes to multiple events on the same night. Uh intending to do good, but we need to get them on our calendar as well, just to make sure that we don't make any mistakes and disappoint anyone.
Is, is there um? I mean, just speaking for the Denny, does it make sense to have that on the Denny website? To have the form up there?
It may be on there, John, I'd have to double check, it's been a while.
Yeah, let's um. Let's, let's check on that and let's uh, Peter, you and I can catch up offline.
Sure.
Make sure we keep it as as. Streamlined as possible.
Yep.
Okay.
That's it for me, I don't know if you have any questions for me.
Any questions, folks? Yep.
Just wanted to say it was a pleasure taking part in the evaluation at superintendent and having an opportunity uh to acknowledge your hard work during. The past year, so uh. Jill, well deserved and uh look forward to completing many more evaluations for you in the future.
Thank you, I appreciate that, I appreciate your support and um I have to thank the staff. And uh the team and the school committee and the families as well for their their help and their support and their patience, I know it was a difficult year. Uh so it really was a community-wide effort, so um. Every, everything that we were able to accomplish was the result of um the hard work. And the will of the community as a whole, so I appreciate that, but I. I can't um, I can't take credit because I know how many people willed this into um. Possibility, and so I appreciate everyone's support.
And and certainly, Jill, you know, this is, this was a. An an amazing year. Particularly for being both yours and Ryan's freshman years. Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent, I'm uh. You might have decided differently had you known what was coming, but uh we're glad you didn't and glad you were here and uh it's great to be able to work with you and and get us to where we are and finishing. As Mr. Benioff said, as with an, as normal a school year as possible. You know, we we accomplished a lot over this year and and and, you know, that was, as I think you're absolutely right, it had to do with everybody. Contributing um and to be able to uh be as successful um with a whole bunch of stuff that we didn't have the answers to, so that's great. Um I'm gonna come back to organization because I figured this was later on in the agenda, um but clearly we um, we we have other uh committee. Other committee uh organizational work to do here because we have some. Committees that will need to reassign since Mike was on a bunch of these. Um so if folks, it was in, it was organizational chart twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two that was sent out with the meeting notes, uh I mean, with all the meeting information. So I'd like to just kind of run through this and see if we can get some folks uh slotted in. So we did the, we did the chair, the vice chair and the secretary, and then for Union thirty one um. As the chair, I am automatically on that, and currently we have. Amy, you were, you were on there, um Jason was an alternate, and we have an open slot on Union thirty one. So that means um. Nikki or Dan and uh Nikki, just, you may have gotten that from earlier in the conversation, Union thirty one is the, is the. Group is really a committee of. The elementary school committees, so when we have joint decisions to make Silver Lake meets and Union thirty one meets to to make those joint decisions. Um and we have a, you know, a handful of those meetings throughout the year. So that's that one, why don't we ru- run through all the spots where we have stuff? Jason, you're still listed as a legislative rep, and I don't think you're gonna be allowed to resign from that. And then uh we have an opening on administrative review, and that's a, I've got a committee that only meets periodically, but clearly is involved uh in dealing with the superintendent's evaluation. And other um other joint contracts, I believe, go to it at admin review. Uh bylaw, uh we have uh Jason on there and he's currently the chair of the bylaw committee. Um negotiating it is myself, and there's an opening on that one as well, um because Mike was on that. Uh the buildings, grounds and capital expenditure, we had uh Amy, myself and Mike, so there's an opening there too. Dan is on the Pilgrim Area Collaborative, and I believe Dan wants to, wants to keep that, so that that is excellent, and it takes some time to get up there, so that's good too. Uh policy uh is is Jason, uh myself, and there's an, and Mike was the alternate, so we have opening there. Uh Amy was listed as the cost liaison, and then Amy and I have done the sixth lead bank, which. Never met and now has met multiple times this last year, so um, you know, it's just. It's great that we are, we were able to do that and to help out, but um, so that's usually a quiet, quiet committee, so. To that end, going back up to the top, we have an opening on um. On Union thirty one.
Nikki? I'd be interested in that if if nobody else was.
Okay. And can add you on that. Admin review.
I I can sign up to that.
Nikki, thank you. And also for the folks that are already on, if there's something you don't want to do anymore, you're welcome to, you can say that as we go by, um except for some of Jason's, he's not allowed to leave. And then who would like to join negoti- negotiations with me?
I'll, I'll take that if nobody else wants to.
I can jump on as the alternate.
Okay. We will, we will again, we'll have a full, full set of negotiations next year because we're all of one year contracts. Uh building and grounds, I I I'm not sure I've actually ever. Uh, building and grounds, I I I'm not sure I've actually ever attended a building and grounds meeting in the seven years I've done this, but we have it here, so. Who would like to who would like to jump on there?
That's my kind of committee, no. The um, yeah, if if uh if something arises and nobody else wants to do it, I'll uh I'll take it.
Yeah, building and grounds and we have policy as an alternate. Those are the two.
I'll take that if no one else is interested.
Awesome.
Hey, wait a minute. I think Nikki and I, the only two raising hands here.
We like that. We like that, yeah.
And and Nikki, the the policy one's probably a good one, even as the alternate, that's good to to come to a couple of them as we go through it to sort of see how that how that sort of flows.
Yeah, that'd be great.
And there we we dig in a little more and we don't just let Jason read everything and then just look at him blankly. Um, that's kind of fun sometimes, but okay, and so I will go good. All right, thank you. Uh. Only thing uh left for us here is we are going to have to do a brief um. I just lost my agenda here. A brief uh executive session for the purposes of um the uh. So.
Are we returning to regular session to vote in public or is this just a strategy session?
What I what I'm gonna suggest is that we talk through an executive session and since we are going to be getting together in the next week. Plus, we're gonna have to get that sorted. I think it's easier to do that than to come and jump back. Um, it doesn't stay on the recording very well and all that, but since we're gonna have an interim meeting. Um, why don't we meet, we'll discuss it and then we'll vote uh at the outset of that that other quick meeting.
Okay. So I make a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purposes of discussing contract negotiations with the Plimpton Teachers Association and aids pursuant. To Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty one A three.
We'll second it.
Dan?
Yes.
Right, can I just, can I just enter for a sec?
Yep.
I just I know that I missed the first few couple of minutes of the meeting and I know caught something in the notes that was incorrect. And it was about the budget, so I figure if I if I noticed that there was an amount there that was incorrect, I need to make sure I. Correct the notes, if you don't mind.
Yep.
Sorry that I'm backtracking.
I will draw my motion.
This is for the April twenty sixth, two thousand twenty one meeting. On the bottom of on page four, we're at list about halfway down, it lists the the votes that were taken. And under um a motion by Jason Frager for the outer district vocational education budget of it was sixty thousand dollars, not sixty thousand seventeen dollars. Thank you. I couldn't let that go.
So we should we should uh revoke the minutes as amended?
Christine, what date was that? It was April?
Twenty sixth.
That was our last.
Regular regular minutes.
There it is, yeah.
Man, nice catch. Seventeen bucks. Can't put it past our financial guru. Thank God. All right, so um I'd like to. Make a motion to accept our amended minutes from our regular session uh of April twenty sixth to reflect the appropriate amount for the vocational education.
Can that?
And we'll call Dan?
Yep.
Amy?
Yes. Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well.
All right, thank you, Christine.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Okay, so why don't we go back to the uh other motion that was that was uh made and seconded and we're gonna do a roll call for that. Uh, Dan?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Nikki?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well, so uh thank you, everyone, for joining and for the folks during the executive session. Um, I sent uh another uh link for that in the email shortly before the meeting. You go over on the other side and for the rest of you, have a great.
Thanks, everybody.